Okay, as part of our procedure, we have to move and endorse proposal for capital through to the Board of Finance Capital Subcommittee, who will then give us some input and report feedback to us before we do a plan. We've gone through, I've taken time to put through a list, talked with the DPW, talked with the various town departments that we have, and put together a list. This is for discussion purposes, and we'll go through them one at a time, discuss the pros and cons of what we have before us, and then talk about it in perspective in terms of, you know, how the budget stood last year, and what type of money we had, and then we've got to make some tough decisions. Right off on the top of the list, we have a plow truck. We have not replaced a plow truck in town for, let's see, yeah, since 2008, '09, at which point the plow truck cost $132,000. They are now up to basically $150,000. And thus, the reason was, as soon as, you know, I got the request in from, or the bid in from Marola, it was, can we finance this? Because in the world of budget, $150,000 is just very difficult to deal with. The truck that we're talking about replacing is a 1994, okay? The oldest, it's the one that has the drop-in spreader, it's frequently recalled, affectionately called the Low Rider, which is spray painted to the side of the wood rails, and it plows up on the south side, the Layer Road, South Road neighborhood. The maintenance expense on it is becoming an issue. The second oldest one, by the way, is 1997. What I'm proposing that we do here is to replace this and make this a part of our long-term budgeting with a three-year financing plan, and perhaps this could stay in place for the next six years, and we will replace these two older trucks, which obviously, if we took three years to pay for this, that 1997 would effectively be the same age. This is soup to nuts. It includes the spreader, it includes the plow, it is everything, turnkey, ready to go, from the DPW perspective.
You can also, you call any plow truck, we can also use it in the other three seasons. Oh, yeah, you know, for hauling and for loading, and we can use it on the new project up on Steel Road, and...
Oh, yeah. No, I don't mean to do that, I just, from a descriptive purpose, we use the smaller F-350 and F-550s that are also the smaller utility trucks that they use in dirt roads and parking around town. This is one of the big trucks.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay. The dumb truck with the big...
But we got, it's a four-season, we can use it for other things, too.
We currently have eight, we have eight big trucks, and there are these two older ones, the 1994 and the 1997 are the issues. They don't particularly, you know, from a user perspective, when you sit there and you look at it from my perspective, you look and you say, well, how many miles are on it? And it's 65,000 miles, there are 65,000 of the hardest miles, and it's really the inclusion of the salt, and a lot of things are just, they wear out, the oil pans, the gas tanks rust out, everything just starts to rust because of the salt. So, this is the recommendation, which is one of three or four things that the DPW asked The second item on there, below it, unnumbered, because I was going to put an alternate next to it, is a compact. The guys do drainage, they dig the holes, they drop in the pipes, and then they like to compact the material, which is an attachment to the VACO. Doug seemed to think that it was a $20,000 acquisition. He also wants a larger roller, which you can see further down. We currently run with a 24-inch roller, one of the small driveway rollers, and that when you get into trying to do bigger jobs on the road, it looks like a wash award. Those are relatively inexpensive. The third item is...
So, what do they do now when they compact the material?
They overfill it and let it settle for two weeks. They drive over it. They have no measure of compaction, they literally let it settle. They overfill the berm to make it equal with the road pavement. They let it sit open for a couple of weeks, and then they come back and they actually let it settle down, and then they dig out the edges to square it, and then they pay them. So, but, the second item is something that is a revisited issue from last year. Our revaluation, which will come into effect next year, is $80,000, so we made a front-end payment of that expense last year at my request to try to buy the cost down. So, the actual expense is $79,000 and change, which was around $80,000.
Now, you mentioned that, what are they called? There's two different types of revaluations.
This is a statistical revaluation, which is, the revaluations are done every five years, the full reval will then occur five years out. So, again, just like item number one, the plow truck, the revaluation issue is probably something that the next revale is going to be a $150,000 line item. So, when you talk about thinking that we'll be out of this after this payment, it's probably something that's just going to stay in there, because, you know, these $30,000 expenditures are tough to budget for. So, it might be something that in next year's budget, we might look at a smaller expenditure, but we're still going to end up...
Thank God, every, a little bit every year.
Yeah, it should be a little bit every year, and then...
Four years, yeah, that's a good idea.
And then we make up the difference at the end.
We want to keep that in last year.
And that would really be our recommendation to the Board of Finance and the Capital Subcommittee, is that this is a recurring expenditure that we should be budgeting out to take, to try to take the highs and lows out of our budget process. I will tell you that the Vision appraisal included a secondary fee, $2,200 a year, to keep the appraisal information online. We've actually pulled that and taken that off-line, and now we're going to NewHartfordGIS.com. About five or six years ago, all the GIS work was done through Bill Baxter and never implemented, and Beth and I had worked to do about $2,000 or $3,000 of extra work to bring it up to date, and then signed a new contract, and the per GIS consultant basically charged about the same price, and we get all the mapping online for free, that's what it comes down to. So, there's no sense in having those duplicate sites on, online at the same time anymore. We've moved in a new direction. We have to, again, keep educating everybody that, hey, we don't use the Vision appraisal anymore, we're using the GIS, but you get all the different mapping, which is really tremendous. So, when you used to go to, you know, Vision, all you would get is the summary property cards and a sketch of the house, and our sketches will be coming online, it's not done yet, but you get a map of a property, and you can get overlaying GIS maps, you can get property maps, you can get soil maps, you can get utility maps, and they can continue to expand this GIS system to offer so much, the upside potential, I think, is really fantastic, so it's a way to go. Items three and four are recurring issues. Kurt Lang does our IT, generally gives us an estimate of budgeting about $10,000 right now. Where it does roll over, we are doing an $18,000 to $19,000 upgrade for three or four workstations and the entirety of the email server, which is 2,003 and maxed out. So, he is in the process of doing this. He recommends that we keep a line item of 10 and go forward with that. The town hall equipment at $10,000. Anybody with any experience with the boiler here, we had a boiler section break, my first year in office was $3,000 bucks, and we have three heat pumps that were limping right now. One of the first selectmen's office, one of the tax collector's office, and one of probate office. So, we are trying to limp them along, but those are the issues here. So, that's that. Recreation is an area for some consideration. I did pass along to you the final capital request from Rec Department. You know, over the last couple of years, we have put a lot of money into recreation through Brown's Corner. We've put $85,000 to $90,000 a year to cure that problem with that driveway and those sand piles, and, you know, I am extremely confident that we will have that done this spring, hopefully for opening day, when we're going to have a massive rededication of that park, and it is going to be done, completed to the site plan that the P&amp;Z has approved. That said, you know, that we've been working with Rec to put some of, they had been getting capital funds, and I think if you go back through the dawn time, they, somewhere over the last five or six years, they got bumped up to $50,000 a year to make improvements on the park. My pitch to them was that at $50,000, you've got to throw 25 of that into Brown's Corner and share the cost of the work there, because we just can't afford, you know, we just don't have sufficient funds to be throwing that much money towards all recreation. I mean, I love to try to make improvements to the park, but we have just so many other demands in town.
Did they total, their, the 250 is not the total of the cost here?
No, that's a little confusing here, but I think that they're lending up...
So, are they happy, Dan, the recreation people? Or, you know, let me, I don't want to say it that way, I mean, it's just that, you know, we got 17, 9, 5, so there we go. They're asking, they seem to be asking for...
They're asking for about 45, right? The difficulty of their position is this, we have a massive ongoing project at Brown's Corner that we're in our second year of 85,000, so...
Well, I think, you know, we've done, you know, I think we should support Brown's Corner, yeah.
Bounced on, tremendous job there, tremendous job there, it was a nightmare. The thing about this is, is that when you look at this piece of paper, it doesn't address really what's, the issues of the day are. I think that if you came to any number of meetings, the topic of discussion is South Brody, and, you know, we've got a growing football program...
No, no, I'm fine with everything. I just want to understand that they, the budget that I have, oh, this is over to, oh, no, for the year 2012-13, they're asking for this. It's a little bit, if you add this up, though, it's probably a little bit more than 45,000, no?
Forty-six-five for 12-13.
All these numbers here?
For 12-13.
Oh, for 12-13.
For 12-13.
Oh, I see, I see what, yeah, I got you.
I think that...
Yeah, 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 okay, fine. I don't think they need a ropes course right now, you're putting that in as an alternative?
Well, I wanted to have an honest discussion about it, I wanted to talk it out, I didn't want to...
What kind of software do they need?
They are proposing a, you know, this cloud software called MyRec.com that would do online registrations for people. Dennis has met with our IT provider, Kurt, who, basically, as far as I'm concerned, nobody does anything to the IT in this town unless Kurt says don't, you know, I just, that's all there is to it. We have one person that calls the shot, Kurt makes the recommendations...
Yeah, no, I mean, the registration seems to go pretty well now, people, do we need that, or?
It seems to be quite...
People are interested in it?
Quite a big expense. The pro of it, conceptually, is that people could do registrations online from home. In theory, you could start collecting, you know, payments eventually over the Internet. I think the thing that we're dealing with here is that we're dealing with 10-week camp. You get 100 to 110 kids a camp, they did 1,100 kids last year, is that the...
Yeah, but not unique.
But not unique.
Right.
So, how many kids are we registering? If kids are doing multiple weeks, are we really, we're not dealing with 1,100 kids, we might be dealing with, doing six, seven hundred registrations. There are a lot of, there are a lot of annual fees that are associated with this. I'm not...
Well, it seems like our participation in our rec programs are already, you know, high, if not maxed out, in some areas, where this, if we had low participation in our programs, then maybe we'd want to...
Beef it up.
Beef it up by putting it online, make it more available, but there seems to be plenty of people using the facilities and registering for the programs already. That's my perception, I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
And here's my thought, too, I mentioned it to Dan, I said, he mentioned that you don't, you're not really getting software, but that $7,000 is just paying for access to the system. I said, you know what, then that's not really capital by the definition of capital.
No, I understand that, yeah.
It needs to be, you know, $5,000, at least $5,000, and have a useful life of five years. And this, I don't think that that meets the definition of capital, first of all, and second of all, yeah, I don't know that it's necessary. There's other things that seem, that...
I mean, they could email the Rec Department if they wanted, right? Rather than calling, emailing, saying, I'd like to register Sam for the program, my check will be forthcoming, in theory, right?
The difficulty of this is, this capital request represents a really big change in mindset. The biggest issue that came in their request last year was a singular request for a new septic system for four of the cabins, okay? They have the art cabin, they have the nurses' cabin, we have the workshop that's by the playscape, and then we have a smaller cabin for the little kids down by the, you know...
Preschool?
Preschool cabin, right. And they wanted $25,000 to do a new septic system for the four buildings, and we had a lengthy debate on this. We had, we contacted the engineers and found out pretty quick that that was going to be a long process, because there are all kinds of regulations. Multi-building septic systems are very difficult to approve, they require variance at Department of Public Health, and you have to do a study of how much water consumption you have to gauge, how big a septic system you need. It's not to say that you can't improve, but there are some hoops to jump through. So, long story short, it went to the ninth hour, 11th hour, last year, and it was in the budget to the very last minute, it got down to it, and there was no supporting documentation, really weren't ready to go. We hadn't done any of the studies. Board of Finance pulled the money, put it, we did Brown's Corner and put a new roof on the fieldhouse up there, and that's all we go for. Now, they came back with this one, and as you can see, in year two, there's a major shift here, where for years, the Recreation Commission has had really no participation in the Brody House, and the last board of selectmen before you had, you know, in light of some events about renting the building and questions about the condition of the structure, is that everybody kind of took a, you know, the sentiment at the time is that the towns probably shouldn't be in the rental business, we should probably move towards getting rid of that. The seniors were talking about going up there, maybe that corner would be an ideal location for a future senior center, using some of the parking with Berkshire Hall, and eventually we phase out and possibly tear down the Brody House. Well, this one, and I have to tell you, give some credit to John and Dan, is that they changed their line of thinking to say, you know, this septic system is really such a darn issue and so expensive, maybe we can rehab the Brody House, maybe we do a little study and put some money into some, you know, they put environmental and cost analysis, but maybe put some money into some design costs to see if there's any possibility of rehabbing that structure. We haven't had anybody, you know, really go in. I know that Paul Wolowski went in, and they said it was in tough shape, and then it was cleaned up. Seems like, you know, some conflicting information there.
But the major hurdle for it right now would be to be ADA accessible.
Absolutely.
Of course, and we would need...
And fire codes.
Yeah.
Yep.
According to the fire marshal, tremendous work to make a fire, please.
So, why don't we go...
It's always a controversial house, so I'm not going to say anything about it. But, you know, so now they're saying they want to rehab it for 25,000?
That would be next year.
Yeah, I see that.
But they want to study it first. So, they're kind of trying to give us an idea that that's where they would go, but in year one, they'd like to study it, and they, again, some of these, when you talk to them, some of these environment cost analysis is to consider the possible acquisition of other fields, they want to continue to do some external studies, even though it kind of forewarned them is that, you know, the idea that we're coming up with 250 for, you know, new purchase in this kind of stretch at this time. I mean, we have so many vast, we just had a presentation on infrastructure needs, I could go off at, you know, on a list of guardrail projects, drainage projects, you know, you name it, sidewalk projects, we could go and talk about infrastructure, I can keep you guys here until 11:30, 12 o'clock tonight. You know, I can't put a number on the, you know, the cost of every bit of sidewalk in this downtown area. You know, only a small bit of it has been redone in the last 10 or 15 years, it's fallen apart. You know, you talk about the guardrails, I was telling Alicia the other day, you know, our new thing here is, every time there's a car accident, trying to get to that insurance company, because we can't afford to replace it, and in the past, I don't know how it was handled by other selectmen, I'm not going to say anything, but, you know, we are right after them, because we can't afford it. The last guardrail that was replaced, $3,500 for, you know, 60 feet, and now we've got a 100-foot section out of Cedar Lane that we're trying to get the, you know...
Responsible party.
The responsible party to get their insurance to go, because we have so many areas of the old wooden guardrails, where the cables are broken, they're not connected, or the posts, you know, we've replaced a lot of the posts, but, you know, those cable connectors and everything, it goes on and on. Why don't we go through, I've put an estimate...
Yeah, we can come back to the question.
I've put an estimate here. Well, why don't, no, why don't we go through their requests one by one and just get everybody's thoughts on it? The ropes course, I'm not necessarily opposed to a ropes course, but I have two issues. First and foremost, there's a ropes course at Aunt Antalene that's probably 10 years old. I know that it was purchased by Jan Jordan when she was superintendent. It's not, it's not really utilized. Now, maybe it's in the wrong spot, being up there or not, maybe being at the camp, we would get one used, but, you know, I have a hard time going to a town meeting and saying, we need a ropes course, and thinking in my mind that someone's going to be there and go, well, damn, we got one already, let's use, you know, how do you answer that question? And I did put that to them, and I really didn't get a, you know, positive, you know, a compelling answer. The answer that was given is that this could, could again, help support the recreation program to keep their enrollment high, and they said, well, I understand, but when it happened over at Antalene, you know, it's just difficult for me to support. My second thing is that if we were to actually put money behind that with a new, you know, maybe this new climbing wall, and obviously now they have all these composite materials, and they can really dress them up and look at it, if we were to prove it, it would have to go somewhere else, because I really don't like the location. The location that has been proposed is right off Berkshire Hall, where that's like the sacred camping ground of the Cub Scouts, they have their little fire pit there, and to do this, you would have to really clear out all the underbrush, you know, change the nature of the location, which is very private now for that, you'd have to cut all the brush, it would change it, it would be this open area. Right now, it's kind of a break, you know, you have the main field at Berkshire Hall, and then it provides a separation. And I think, you know, our thing is that, you know, we're here to keep the character of the park, you know, the best we can. We start clear cutting and changing things like that, and you've got to dig it out 12 inches to put in wood chips and stuff like that. You know, I just get worried that we'd be making a change to the character in that location that I'm not comfortable with.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think, I don't like that location either, but that's where you keep your animals there, right? Dying New Hartford days, is that the location?
We don't have animals at New Hartford.
Yeah, but when you did keep them, thank you, thank you, I want to make sure I have the right location.
I think you need a barn bra or some animals, I'll put it there, though, this passport.
Yeah, I like, it's nice having the barrier, the natural barrier.
It keeps the park more quaint.
The only thing I would say, and I think I said it before, is, I can't think his name, I don't know, but he lives right up here on Main Street. He was involved with the ropes courses, a river in front of the castle, so...
I think we already, Don.
Yeah, Don, you know, so, maybe he could bring some insight to it, whether, you know, whether they dismantle the old one and reassemble it, or, you know, maybe that would be a way to go. Set up a pilot program where we got the ropes course, we're going to meet at Antalene and check it out.
Have our guys disassemble it?
Either that, or see, you know, see if there's enough interest where, if you say, we have it, let's get someone like Don over there to see if people register for it, and then if they do and they like it, then move it to Brody or then get a new one, or...
You have to have somebody in sight all the time.
No, I realize that, no, you wouldn't open it to the public, you just say...
And there's operational issues, you've got to get certification, things like that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not ready for this year, the ropes course.
But we could pursue a salvage of the existing, really, no, plus a little bit of labor out of the town crew.
We could look into it, it has to be installed by the, we have to, the insurance company to see, they can dismantle it, they can install.
Okay, so there'd be, well, then we, that would be, that we could consider that a, you know, a contingency, you know, if we could get a decent fee.
Are they really hung up on having a ropes course, the Rec Commission?
It's not at the bottom, it's not at the bottom, the rest is at the top.
Okay.
So, I'd scoot through, give you my few studies, I think in terms of design costs for the, to take a look at what's going on with the Brody House and some, you know, a little bit of environmental things for the parks I'm okay with. You can see that in my proposal here, that I put 5K in, trail upgrades, I am, I think there's a ton of potential for trail upgrades in this town, we have trails all over and they're underutilized. I think 5K would give them the opportunity to see what machine time costs and to get an idea of what, per linear foot, how much they could get in terms of getting skid steer, maybe some bluestone or scum dust here to improve the trails to walk. I know that there's, the sky's the limit with the Antalene Trail to Serdham, I think the back of South Brody, all the way down to Marsh Road, improving Shady Brook Road, Barella Road. Barella Road be a challenge, because there's a huge wash down there now that would require an engineer solution, but I'm all in favor of that. Callahan Park, I really don't have a problem with Callahan Park improvements either. The IT upgrade, again, when I asked Kurt specifically, I said, Kurt, are you ready to give me a recommendation to approve this at this point in time? He said, I don't have enough information, conceptually I don't have a problem with it, but I wouldn't give you that recommendation now. He said, you know, when you start talking about cloud-based Internet stuff and start taking registrations online and taking computer information, you know, we always read about somebody lost somebody's computer information. He says, you got to get security stuff in there, he said the remote, he usually does his work here. He said we'd have to have training, there is a whole protocol of a new way of doing business that the three of us would be responsible for, mostly me, because I catch the freak around here when things go bad, is that if, God forbid, we ever lost a...
A credit card.
A file of people's credit cards. I could see, you know, we got people doing all kinds of classes and different things in Berkshire Hall, you know, it's not like, it's not like we have seven great policemen on duty here where there's always somebody up there, we've got, you know, as we all know, very limited public safety.
I mean, if there was a problem with the registration, you wouldn't have the, you know, all the programs wouldn't be full already, so I think they could probably do that.
So, and then technically speaking, you know, Berkshire Hall, the paint job is not truly capital. I try to explain to them, just like as you go down a little further, they have $2,000 for more studies. It's technically the, I tell them all the time, that the definition of capital is 5,000, five years' use of life, and it doesn't, I don't really have a problem with them making improvements to Berkshire Hall. If we chose not to do this and we wanted to give them more maintenance money, I understand that, but I don't have a problem with them doing some upgrades to keep the building in good shape, I think that's a part of our responsibility. So, as you can see here, I did, I did a combination of Callahan Park, trail upgrades, Berkshire Hall, paint, and Brody study, total of five grand, and then, you know, Field House, we put in 20,000 for a total of 35. I don't think that when you get into the debate with the Board of Finance, they do not tend to look at these things separately, and that's why, you know, when you talk about Antalene field improvements, we may in fact want to include that, because the biggest issue in town right now is this football thing going on, and to ignore that, you know, I think to account for it separately would be a mistake in our final draft. We have to show people how much truly goes into recreation, you know, and I think that, you know, the last couple of years, we've been very fortunate, but I think if we don't put some money into the Antalene field improvements, people will think of us giving them lip service and that they're playing at South Brody forever, and I do think that the best location for them is up behind the school, but it needs work, you know, it needs...
So, what you're saying is maybe you should take, I don't know, put it up there with them?
Come on, they do like to see that, the Board of Finance.
Oh, I agree.
Put it all together in our final, when we decide, on a number.
Yeah, list them all out as a subset, but...
So, yeah, like as we go down here, you know, I don't know where you guys are on the software, the ropes course, I just, at this point in time, I just don't know that I'm behind it.
I'm not.
The, as we go down, the roller, these things are, as Chris, our mechanic, says, and we got some pretty good experience in this, when we did the search for our new road grader, or new to us road grader, 1999, when we started really searching these data ba... Uh, when we started really searching these databases, these these large rollers are really all over the place out there. You can get your hands on them relatively inexpensive. We saw a lot in the three to five range. It would really be a couple day trips for me, probably into New York, you know, up to Albany or up to Massachusetts or, you know, down to New Jersey. And then we'd need, you know, a little bit of maybe some shipping money, but three to five grand, a thousand dollars to transport, you know, something like that. I think that we could really do that and that could really act as your your compactor, you know. And it would improve the level of the spot paving that we do. You know, and to them, I gotta tell you, that road grader is getting used all the time. It is out there, I know that it's been off of Stedman Road and Old Steel Road just recently and it's, you know, we haven't had the opportunity to give people, you know, the services that they deserve because we haven't had the machinery. But now, you know, all these dirt roads are getting graded out and these guys are after it. You give them, you give them the roller and it just gets better.
I think it makes a good idea, makes good sense to get one.
Okay, I was gonna go down the list a little bit more. Downtown improvements, we have several things going on that we're working with our building oversight committee. As you can see, I've listed them. We just did a hundred and seventy-one feet, I believe it is, on Main Street for ten thousand dollars of sewer improvements. We have about a hundred and eighty feet on Central Avenue from the library down to the center. We're getting ready to do this downtown revitalization, get ready to pave the whole thing over. Our consultants tell us the line needs replacement. We are planning on trying to pitch this as part of the grant, but we don't know that it is eligible for cost. To to redo that street and not redo the line would be foolish in my mind. You've gotta do the subterranean infrastructure. If we get lucky and we get the the money back from the state, that's gravy, this money goes back to the taxpayers.
Before you, before you repave Steel Road, you're gonna replace the soil line?
No, 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 this is, this is on Central Avenue.
Oh, Central Avenue.
Okay. Uh, you know, we have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar Steve Grant that we're working on, on the downtown realignment of this intersection here. We're working on an agreement to try to forward with the the folks in the Beasley Library to give us an easement for eleven parking spaces on the old Foothills Trader space. And as you can see later in this, part of the agreement is we're trying to develop that into a park where we put a little gazebo out there.
So, it won't be kicked out when I park there for mass anymore?
It'd be an easement, for municipal, so.
I think we should, I think, you know.
You you have, you have the sewer improvements, you have.
They want their lights to go on, we should let us park there.
We have ten thousand dollars for sidewalk replacement on Main Street. We have fifteen thousand dollars for the ADA sidewalk replacement at Steel Road and Central Avenue where we've moved. If anybody's noticed, we've got permission to have the crosswalk moved, but we're required to do the ADA crossings. And we have a bit on that at fourteen eight, something like that, I just put it in for fifteen thousand, and then the gazebo. The two items that we think have a chance of reimbursement are the sidewalks and the sewer. So, we might have a chance, but I don't think you can go forward with these grants without putting some money here to get these jobs done right. Because then obviously, if they, if you don't, you're you're asking for long-term trouble, I don't think you're planning correctly. The next issue, drainage, drainage everywhere. This number could be three times what it is. One cross pipe for a forty-inch pipe on Woodchuck that I have digital pictures in my office, is collapsing, is twenty-one thousand dollars, okay? With the repave, you know, excavation, everything. We have a secondary crossing on Steel Road that's part of that, that is a big crossing that's gonna need to be done, you know, with our engineer supervision. That could easily be another twenty thousand. And then there are at least, on Steel Road alone, ten fifteen-inch pipes as part of that project. The town crew guys can do a good majority of them. But when it, when I put in an extra twenty-five thousand on top of those two twenty, twenty or twenty-one thousands, as part of our paving projects, we have Tanglewood Road this year and Livery Pool. Each one of those roads has at least six or seven or eight catch basins that need to be rebuilt. Now, we have one team of two guys that does all this. They can't possibly do this all in one summer. They cannot do six or seven catch basins on Livery Pool, seven or eight on Tanglewood, ten cross pipes on Steel Road.
Right.
Woodchuck, so some of it has to be subbed out.
Sure.
And as I told you, this number could be two or three times this to get these work done. We have the appropriation for Steel Road, the largest theme that came out of the town meeting. When I, when I pitched the idea to the town was, Dan, take your time, do the drainage right. That's what they said, they don't, they didn't, of all things, we've waited so long for the southern side of Steel Road, please, do the drainage right. So, my thought process was at least some allocation to help them so that Doug and Joe, who do the drainage work, could focus on that. Uh, bridge improvements, and I gotta tell you, I put this in here, it's something that we can discuss and maybe it could wait a year. We are working on a couple smaller things within the highway budget. Every two years, we get bridge inspection by the state. Every two years, they tell us of these little jobs all around that can be done. There's one job on Steel Road down by the park at the bottom that needs to be taken care of, that's not really a town crew job. A lot of them are, you're losing bolts on the fences, you can do those. The stone facade on the edge is done, we can do those. There's trees growing too close to the abundance, we can cut, we can do those. And and out of our, we have ten or eleven state bridges in town and I think the difference being is that they have to be greater than twenty feet to get into the state program. But they write them all up, every single one, every bridge basically has a laundry list of a couple little things to do. You know, this is what the inspectors do and they they guide you on how to preserve the life of these things. You know, maybe this is something that doesn't stay here, maybe not, but I just wanted to put it in there because in in a perfect world, if we were, if we had a better level of funding and a better economy, this would be an operator for me. Uh, number ten on the list, plan of conservation development. Every ten years, the folks in the zoning office have to update their plan. The last time they did it was sixty thousand dollars, it's due in three years. I put this in in this way as a warning, it's not to say that we couldn't do.
Sixty thousand dollars.
That's what I said.
Jesus.
Well, they just, they just did their zoning regulations, sixty-five thousand dollars over three years.
That would, that they did have done that in twenty or more years, right?
Well, I'm, this is not to say.
Who's in that business? I mean, who is upgrading the town's plan of development for sixty, sixty thou?
They use, what's the name of the outfit that they use?
It's been Planometrics, but there are other, there are other outfits out there, but they're all around the same class.
This, this again, when I talk with everybody in the in the departments, this comes out arista and these guys is a forewarning. It's not to say that we couldn't do two payments of thirty thousand next year. But, you know, the smart money is, boy, if we had this thing planned out at six thousand a year, this would be a non-issue, you know.
Let's hope we shop, let's hope we, let's hope we're shopping that because that's in my mind, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the twenty thousand per year, I'm just thinking.
Right, well, I mean.
What, 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 how much does the plan change?
She said she'd get close.
Yeah.
Uh, that's up to our commissioners, I mean, obviously.
No, I understand.
You know, they they are trusted with that responsibility. I'm just trying to budget for them to make sure.
Yeah, I see that, I see that, I'm fine with that. Yep.
You know, and and these days, to get these consultants to come all these meetings, you know, and you have people, public input and, you know, it's a lengthy process. They did, it was three years, you know, for for the zoning regulations that they did and they just just finished them up. So, it seems like it's a big expense, but you know, you're asking consultants to come around to your market for three years, but, you know. And then last on the list is something that we were bouncing back and forth with the recreation expense is the the Antolini field improvements. You know, at some level, I I just think it it absolutely has to be included at some level to show, you know, that we're trying to take this larger organization of football and put them into a less contentious location, make some improvements to add a little bit of space to that field and make it comparable to what they're using now and and move soccer up to Brody Park, which is ten or fifteen people, five or ten cars. The recreation commission is concerned about safety in terms of the cars and how many people are up there. And, you know, there's no doubt, we've got some grown pains, we're gonna have some adjustments here on how we park these cars for the next couple of years.
So, so is it, I understand that, once we put the improvements into Antolini, we could move the lights up there and move the practice up there and then move the soccer to Brody Park itself?
We are, we are preparing, I have, I'm in negotiations with our town's consulting engineers, met with them twice now on a task order that will prepare a site plan to expand the field at A and Antolini in conjunction with the proposal to redo the playscape and make sure that we have compliant ADA parking access. And go forward with the proposal to the P and Z that will allow for the expansion of the fields and will include a provision to allow them to use temporary lights. That's, that's what we're asking our consultants to draw, you know.
Yeah, gotcha, good, I I think that's, I think that's a good idea, you know, I think we have, doing the site tour and everything, yeah.
So, we've, we've heard feedback, we've heard feedback from the community, we've had people coming in and anything out of recreation, that's what we hear the most about.
No, I agree with you.
So, and and just.
That's all I've heard about.
Out of respect.
From anybody about it, no, just kidding, I agree with you.
But out of respect for the commissioners, here's the thought process with, when I talk to the rec commissioners and and I don't mean this as a slight when I put them separately is that, to me, this is the biggest issue. Their sentiment is that they know they're not gonna get fifty thousand dollars, that they'd be lucky and grateful to take twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars if they could get it, knowing that we have these other concerns. Their thing is that if we imposed our will to say, your group will pay for the Antolini field expansion, then that's all that would get done that whole year. And that's why they believe that we have to intervene and have a separate appropriation. Because there are other issues around the parks that become issues. So, and the same with the Field House. When you talk about the Field House improvements, we have this, what I believe is the diamond in the rough, sixty-four hundred square foot gymnasium, now sealed to the weather, dries a bone tight. Uh, I signed it, just so you know, I signed a task order with Fuss and O'Neil today to go up and do a study of the, the stage material for, to, for potential for asbestos. Because if anybody's going in that building, we're gonna have kids in there and we'll make sure that's safe. And so, for six hundred and ninety dollars, seven hundred dollars, six hundred and ninety.
Six ninety.
Six hundred and ninety, they're gonna start the process right now, just got the task force, so you're gonna see a PO for that. And we're gonna build that to the Field House. But we gotta make sure that that's safe. And again, the same thing applies there with the rec mission, and I agree with them, is that if we were to say, hey, we have the Field House, they'd say, well, we never get anything done anywhere else in town. I mean, you could put a hundred thousand, we, that'd be everything they wanted to do for four years, so.
Yeah, that's, I think it looks good. I mean, you gotta get, you gotta get the asbestos out of there, so.
Right, and and.
Can't do it at night, unfortunately, so.
So, now let's just have a little, let me give you the harsh reality of where we stand. I've given you with the, with the couple alternates that I, you know, the the compactor and the software and the ropes course. The the predicament that we're in is that over the last three years, last year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The year before, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The year before, three hundred and sixty thousand, so.
And that's, that's us and that's the only.
So, if you did the rolling average, which I know these Board of Finance numbers are stickers for math and numbers, two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety-five thousand. You you have items on here that in in total cost three hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, of which, I'll tell you right off the top, how can you say that you can't pay for a rebuild? You can't, you know.
And that, and that was the Board of Finance recommendation to put it in capital instead of your operating budget so that you don't have this big fluctuation.
Right? Yeah, so right off the top, if you're saying, you know, that, you know, two hundred and fifty, we'd be lucky to get two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, right off the top, forty thousand is there. You know, the plan of conservation development, I think it's smart money. You know, twenty thousand dollars to start budgeting this out in advance so that it's, it becomes, it's not a budget issue, you know. The downtown improvements, we have these two grants, quarter million over here, two hundred thousand left over here. You gotta have the money in the pipeline to get these things done, to get the job done correctly, or else the project stalls.
I'm all about fixing up the downtown, it's coming on good, so I, I'll go among.
So, when you talk, you know, you'd be your plow truck, you know.
Yeah, you can't keep.
Nineteen ninety-four, you know, rust and fall apart, you haven't bought a truck in, how many years did we sell?
It was eight, nine, dozen, eight, nine.
Haven't bought a truck in four years.
Did that, did that actually get purchased though? It was on the list, Mike, did it get purchased?
Yeah, I believe so, I believe it did. The, well, why don't we run down the list and everybody, just do a little struggle.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what.
And see where we are, where you wanna go?
What I have an issue with is, is, you know, the the software and the ropes course, I'm not willing to to back those. You made reference to using the roller as a compactor, so if that's.
I kinda knew the compactor was going by that.
Yeah, if we could do that.
I just wanted to put it out there as a request from those guys, just so that you knew, you were aware of it, okay?
Yeah, I would, I would take those three things off and I think that brings that down to three-ten, three-ten-five. And I would be in favor of moving that.
Endorsing that for review by the capital subcommittee, I think that's the vote we need tonight.
I have no problem with it.
I think everything else is important enough to, i- if we could afford it, to address these in this year. If perchance, then the the ultimate authority board finances, you know, can you cut something? Then we'll go back and we'll look at, you know, what we may have to cut from there, but I think these are all important.
And I gotta tell you, the drain, the thing that sticks out to me, the truck to me, I think is good business, the rebuild's good business. The the technology at Town Hall, I think, are required. Recreation, I think that's a reasonable accommodation, knowing that, you know, you're putting more money into the Field House and and Antolini.
Right.
The thing that sticks out to me, I think the downtown improvements are priced right on and we've got bids for most of it. I gotta tell you, you know, if if times were better and we had some construction going on here, and just point reference, the grant list, Beth has basically done with the grant list, about a percent increase, we're gonna see about two hundred thousand dollars in new money this year, okay? So, two hundred thousand dollars worth of new money. You know, when, when the, when we talk about the discussions and how the the needs of the education boards and us, e- even if it were in a perfect world, distributed equally.
Not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money, especially when you start talking about cola, you know, things like that, which we're gonna talk, have a little broader budget discussion here in a minute. I mean, you know, I almost wanna put a note next to the drainage saying, if in fact you have anything, I'd love to see twenty thousand extra drainage. You know, if there's any opportunity there, I I'm just not, I I just wanna even just have the conversation, knowing, but my biggest thing is, sometimes I tend to be too conservative. And and if I see a need out here right now, it's drainage. I mean, it's, it's just, in every corner of town.
I, but I think the Board of Finance, I think they'd have a hard time swallowing this this whole budget, so I don't, I don't know that I'd be able to get that. But I, but I agree with you.
Well, does anybody wanna make a motion to endorse a revised list that I will take the draft off, eliminate the compactor, software and ropes course?
I'll make a motion.
And let me just see, the total would be thirty-seven, seven, it's forty-four.
Seven, right.
Three-ten-five, right? We're all in agreement?
Yes.
I think the appropriate motion is to endorse the proposal for review by the capital subcommittee.
I'm sorry.
Well.
I was trying to make a review.
Okay, go ahead. No, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that we're.
Yes.
And and just to have it, before you do that, just for, I put these notes on it for clarification, we're really improving the expenditures. I may broaden my explanations for review when we get to the Board of Finance level, just so that we're clear. We're proving the concept and the dollar.
Right, but.
Okay, if the, if the capital subcommittee needs more explanation or things like that, or they, you know, I'll add to the the explanation.
How about the, I I make a motion to move forward the, the listing of capital items amended to remove the compactor, the software and the ropes course for a net total of three. for a net total of three hundred and ten thousand, five hundred. Forward that to the capital expenditure subcommittee for review.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Send Kate an email.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Last item on our agenda, uh, well, second item, we've got a little executive session coming, is just general, uh, operating budget discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, my pleasure.
Right.
The, uh-
Sleep tight. Okay. All right. Just wanna make sure we're used to it.
I think when you get it into the discussion where we're going with the general government and the entirety of the budget, I think the thing that you guys need to be made aware of is that the circumstances of enrollment will work against the town this year for Region Seven. From what I've been informed, the, our three partner communities, Barhamstead, Norfolk and Colbrook, are all losing students to the tune of twenty students. And our enrollment is gaining by twenty students. So when you talk about-
Because people wanna live here again, you know, it's a good thing.
Well, that, that's, that's the, uh-
Right, I mean, that's one way to look at it, you know, that's optimistic.
It's, I think when you study it for as long as I have, it, it's a penalty. And it's a very unpredictable, you know, timing thing. We all have our kids and they're all various ages. And sometimes within the budget cycle, the, the proportionality works with you and sometimes it doesn't. Overall enrollment is still defining slightly. But in this one particular year, we have a big sixth grade that's going up there and the other towns have small sixth grades and they're graduating out. It's just that cycle of who's graduating out, who's coming in. We're not seeing big increases, but in the, in the scope of things of what that means is that any increase that comes out of Region Seven, which is that you guys have- You, you've signed a couple checks now, so you know what we send them monthly. You know, almost eight hundred thousand is really increased proportion. You know, a three percent increase becomes a six percent increase for us. So when I tell you that the grand list is going up, you know, one percent or so, you know, Beth's final number and maybe we'll be lucky to get two hundred thousand. Region Seven alone could grab half of that. Folks upstairs, they released their budget, uh, the other night, three point seven percent increase. You know, last year, we, we got by with a zero, you know? This year, I don't know how long-
Well, we're already increasing the capital.
That's right. I don't know how long we can continue at that rate. You know, the, the bottom line is that these things like the drainage issues, you know, the truck issues, just, it becomes more of a liability to us as the years of town to stick the next guy with the bill, you know? And at some level, we have a responsibility to start doing more highway work, doing more guardrail work, doing more tree work. Christine and I are, are getting ready to write a couple letters to CLMP on a couple recommendations and try to get some more tree work out of these folks, just to try to make sure that we have it. But, you know, our tree budget, you know? Look what just happened out there. Everybody's sitting around, no power for a week, you know? Do we increase that line item or not? I just don't think that we can make it a go at, you know, a zero anymore. And I think we need to start fighting for equity in terms of improvements for all. You know, you have everybody around here, you know, Bakerville Library has issues, we, we fund them. Beasley Library, they're working with us, but we really need that to work with us more than ever now. And we need this, uh, this easement agreement to go forward with this grant and get more parking in this downtown for this, for this side of town to thrive, you know? We need more guardrail work, we need more drainage work. A lot of that purchaser, it's a lot of things that don't get done on a regular basis. Seems we've gotta paint those lines every two years, every year, you know? More and more, more and more repairs on pavings and curving that just doesn't seem to get done. Means you run out of money. You get these freak storms that sap fifty thousand dollars out of your budget and all of a sudden somebody's road doesn't get paved. And, you know, I wrote a, I wrote a letter to the P and Z and they were getting ready to draft their new subdivision regulations. And the subdivision regulations dictate how a developer has to build a road. Ten inches of stone, three inches of pavement. My letter, make it four, the taxpayers can't afford to repave this. And they implemented it. Good idea? I mean, in industrial subdivisions, it should be five or six inches where these big trucks. We have to start thinking out on how we preserve and protect the infrastructure here to make it last longer because we're just not seeing the growth. And I think conceptually, you know, I just don't think that we can go at a zero. I think that we need to talk about what we're level, what our level of threshold is for the general government side. Knowing, you know, we gotta, we gotta fight that fight, but we gotta be able to stand up and say, look, there's work to be done around here. And, and case in point, you know, when you sit there and talk about it, a lot of these, the department requests I sent out, you know, I usually send out a good half of them saying, hey, I think the best, the best course of action for you is to file. You know, because they're a small department, things like this, but Bakerville Library, their software is now obsolete and they need twenty, fifteen or twenty thousand dollars extra this year. There's just not a chance that I can find fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, you know? And, and you get into an equity debate with, you know, the, the Beasley Library. We were lucky to raise their, both their budgets, two thousand dollars last year. You know, after a couple of years of being stagnant, we, we did fight the fight and count two thousand, but it was tough. We had the public safety line item went through the roof at the last minute and, and got them a little bit. A little bit helps, but you know, these guys have, you know, what you find out is a lot of these groups that are fundraising, fundraising is down. They're trying to provide a service that's, that's free to our residents in this bad economy. And, you know, like anything, the cost of living and all the things it takes to run the buildings are going up and up and up and, you know, their funding is flattered out. So, uh, you know, I don't know whether you guys have given any thought in general as to what you thought the budget should be going up and increasing, whether it be one percent. I know that we've been very, very keen on keeping it leaning the last couple of years, but I just see that a lot of this stuff is, you know, at some level, we've negotiated a good contract and we're getting ready to talk about a contract in executive session. We, we do have, you know, just to give you a forewarning, you know, we, we renegotiated the healthcare with the Town Hall and the DPW union. We talked about implementing a new plan which saves us roughly, you know, eighty thousand bucks. Well, get one new person joins onto the system, there goes twenty-five percent of your savings. You get a seven or eight percent COLA, there goes half of your savings.
Who's our healthcare? Who, who, who are the negotiators for that? Who provides the healthcare services for the Town Hall employees?
Anthem through Bezuno. The, uh, and, and there's a thing out there now with the possibility of us going in with the state that we're, we're doing a study through the Litchfield Health Council, elected officials with the surrounding towns to see if there's any potential for savings there, to see again. And, and the healthcare line item's coming down, twenty thousand bucks. But you know, that, just, you find out how hard it is to keep things flat or go down because the cost of living increases and these things just go so quick. Pavement went up eight percent last year, I think we increased our paving expenditure two thousand dollars. So we got five, six, seven percent less pavement last year than we got the year before. We have to make a good paid effort to increase the paving budget. And I know that in our draft figures, I was penciling in forty-five or fifty thousand dollars. And I know that I'll never be able to get that much in one year. But I gotta know from you guys where you stand in terms of, you wanna see a draft in our next meeting that had one and a half percent, you wanna see a draft at two percent? You know, I don't wanna bring something forward to you guys that you're gonna sit there and say, well, this, or do you wanna just consider it, you know, line by line, we can go through it, you know?
I'm all about line by line, I'm sorry.
I know you are and I respect that, but at some level, I have to gear, when I put it together.
And I, and I would look-
I have to gear it to a specific number.
Yeah, and I, and I-
And if you wanna see something at one percent to start us off, or you wanna see something at two percent and we can, we can pull the back the reins and see what we talk about? You know, what do you wanna do? Where, where's your, where's your thoughts on that issue?
Well, if you're looking for a percentage, I, I would put in for more than one percent.
I mean, we're talking about getting together, we're gonna break the calculator out and, and start, you know, having a good discussion on it line by line, so that we reserve the right as a group to change and modify whatever we need to change. But if you want, I mean, I'll keep it within under two percent to start. And we can go from there if I can. And I'll just, this is a fair warning, you know, this is, we're talking to a tax collector today, you know, and, uh, on the heels of this summer's tax sale, we did have a tax sale through the tax collector's office, you know? Linda, Linda was-
She didn't sell?
We did sell two or three properties.
One didn't sell.
And one didn't sell. But, uh, you know, as part of Linda's department request for collector, collector's offices, the potential for, you know, uh, an increase, substantial increase in collection fees, you know, should things get worse and she chooses to do it internally. We always bear expenditure when we go through that process, but usually it's done by the marshals and it's taken out of the proceeds and we don't feel a direct taxpayer hit.
Sure.
And that's what my recommendation to her was, you know? It's easier to take it out of the past due than it is to charge the taxpayers and get revenue back. So, but she, you know, she's just giving a fair warning, is that, you know, if the economy continues to stagnate, we do have collection issues, this may be something we might have to add in and we could be talking about ten grand, fifteen grand, twenty grand. So depending on how many properties you do, how many you have to notice, how many you have to put in public, you know, legal ads and things like that, um, so. What do you think?
So there's still-
You wanna, does anybody have any strong feelings? You want me to trust, trust my gut here and stick in the one to two percent range? You know, we can go through it?
I agree, I think one percent's not enough. I mean, because, you know, you're better off getting a little higher and then, you know, like you say, as you get looking at, you know, the individual apartments, but, you know, I think that-
A lot of it would be in the, in the highway area, I'm sure, rather than-
It is, it is.
Yeah.
The, uh-
So there's, there's, there's more properties out there that, that are in danger of being foreclosed upon?
Uh, there, there are some that she continually keeps an eye on.
Yeah.
She does have a list for your review if you want. I mean, it's not in her statutory realm to get involved in that, but she does seek guidance when it comes to budgetary issues.
Which one didn't sell?
Uh, the one that didn't sell was a lot shady bookroom.
Sure.
Why don't, why don't we do that? Why don't we keep it in the one to two percent range? We'll come back and we'll reserve the right to make the adjustments that we have, like we always do, we'll go through. And it'll be a, it'll be a long meeting, that's usually, you know, bring your calculator and, and we'll go through. We'll, we'll just go through it, maybe we'll get Annie to come in and, and help us out with that, run the individuals. There's a lot of these line items that, you gotta know the history and what's involved with it, so. Maybe we could have a day meeting if, if it's okay with you.
We could do that.
You know, if that's okay with you. Maybe we can work something out and just do budget for one day and then have a regular, so we can get ahead of it.
Makes sense.
All right, well, I'll have Christine send out an email. Why don't we, um, why don't we go forward with that and that one to two grand or, or, you know, as a draft? And then we'll go forward and, uh, we'll keep an eye out. There's always a couple extra, uh, special meetings and we have budget time for us. And we'll go forward. So, do we want to close the public portion of our meeting and adjourn to our executives? I don't wanna say adjourn, but get ready for executive session, which should be brief, just an update.
I motion to close.
To move to executive session?
To, to move to close the special meeting and move to executive session.
A second.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna close, you just wanna move to executive session.
Oh, okay.
Eight thirty-four.
Close the public section, public section.
Yeah.
Motion to move to executive session eight thirty-four.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that as unanimous.